Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Planning Commission for December thirteenth, two thousand and ten. At this time, I'll call a meeting to order and ask for any public comment on any items not currently listed on our agenda this evening. Seeing none, we'll move to our first item of business, which is a request from Mayor-elect Doug Neely to speak. And we'll...I talked to everybody, they said it'd be okay if he came up. Hang a minute.
One of the first series I'll have at Transformal is to appoint people to the various commissions and advisory committees. It looks like, uh, it looks like we'll have a total of seven people on this, uh, Planning Commission next year. Uh, we had, uh, how many applications was it? Eight? Eight. And I wanted to talk to you about how you wanted to, uh, go through the selection process. Now, most of the advisory committees that I've gone to, they set up their own interviews, and I have sat in and listened to those interviews. I understand that's not typically what happens here, so I'd like to have your input as to how you would want to progress on reviewing these applications. Now, of course, I make the appointments, and, uh, normally, and at least so far, I will be accepting the recommendations of the advisory committees that have made them at this point. Uh, partly because in some cases, enough people apply to fill with positions, but, uh, in your case, of course, you have more people, e- e- even though I think there's some term on this finish here, you have more people that are applying, and you will have open positions, which hasn't been the case recently, so this is very good. Um, so, I'd like your input right now, if you would, on how you want to proceed.
Okay. Uh, anyone who'd like to comment? I'll finish it up with my thoughts.
I haven't been involved in, in any of the selections before, so I'm not, uh, um, I'm not, I don't know what actually happened, so whatever, you know, the, the mayor would like to do, I support. Yeah.
Well, my, I'm, then, my feeling, you know, I, I would like to be involved in the discussion, and I think the outgoing commissioners and the, and the sitting commissioners, uh, would be probably all would be interested in it, uh, if we could manage a time that would work in this short time we have left. And that's the real challenge, and, uh, I think it'd be nice to be able to have, have that discussion with the candidates, and, and then, of course, have you be there as well. And then we would, we would gather our thoughts and present to you what our feelings are.
Mr. Cockles, uh, suggested that the first Monday in, uh, January, we could, uh, have the interview, which means the decision would be, have to be made by, by the fifth, which is the day of the first commission meeting. Uh, and, uh, it's up to you how many people here participate, whether you want to delegate responsibilities to one or more individuals, how you want to proceed on this process.
Okay. Well, I'd like to have more, you know, talk with these guys and see what they like to do, but either way, I think, uh, if we can schedule it for the third, and then those of us that can make it, make it, um, and then respond back on the fourth, so that you'll have our input by the fifth, or by the fourth, so you can make your decision on the fifth.
That'd be fine. Um...
I would think we would have, um, Doug there as well on the third, um, to be a part of that interview process.
Yeah, oh, no, I would do that.
Yeah, absolutely. And I, and I would say, uh, the third in the evening, uh, would be best for me, yeah, I mean, so...
So you're reckoning on what, about fifteen minutes per applicant with eight, that's about two hours?
I would think that would be sufficient.
Okay. That's reasonable to me.
I don't want to drone it on, but I definitely think, uh, you know, if we can go fifteen minutes and have the option, if we want to ask further questions, we can, but...
Uh, the fifteen minutes actually work for the other, for the advisory committees that I've, uh, have, they've had interviews, and usually, they don't even go for the full fifteen minutes, but, of course, Planning Commission is a different, a real different body, because you are a, a government council.
Right. So, that's, that's...
And just, you know, if we don't have final decision tonight on how many folks will be, um, attending from the Planning Commissioners, um, I'll probably follow up with an email. If we do have more than three, we'll have a quorum, I'll need to publicly notice that, so, um, you know, as schedule's going to shake out, it's, just keep me in the loop as to if you said you're going to be there and something came up and you're not, or if you thought you weren't and you were there now, uh, just, just trying to give you a heads up, so that at least I have a week to, uh, to notice that, uh, we'll be having a public hearing on January third, or public meeting.
And I assume you all will be getting copies of the applications at this time?
Providing them now, yeah.
Okay.
All right, very good.
Okay.
Well, that's the plan, then.
That's the plan.
So, we'll see you on the third.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I guess, you know, uh, the only, the only drawback would be if, you know, trying to schedule eight people for one day, uh, if some folks didn't make it, um, do we want to have the fourth available as well, um, saying, these are the two days that we have to meet, uh...
The fourth would work for me, because I'm off, but I could, I could do that during the day even if need be, uh, I don't know if for everybody else, that may not work for everybody else, but...
Are we thinking evening or afternoon?
Evening, yeah, after work, yeah.
Evening, yes, yeah, for me.
Okay. All right. So I get, you know, I'll try and get everyone on the third, and if something happens, and maybe one or two on the fourth, if we, if we had to, uh, but I will try and get everything on the same day.
Okay, very good. And we'll just plan on seven?
Um, would maybe a little bit earlier, maybe six?
Six thirty would be there early, that I'd make it.
All right, six thirty it will be?
All right, very good.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Let's move on to our next discussion, and that is adoption of the Planning Commission minutes for October twenty-fifth, two thousand and ten. And, uh, has everybody had the opportunity to look through those, if there are any questions at this point, or, or changes?
No changes, no changes, no changes.
Obstained. Okay, well, then I will look for a motion.
I move to adopt minutes for any commission, uh, meeting on, uh, ten twenty-five, uh, two thousand and ten. Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Tony?
Mr. Stein, aye. Uh, Commissioner Groner.
Obstained.
Mr. Lezwa, aye. Mr. Kidwell, aye.
Herr Paul.
Aye. Okay. And we're, assume we're going to go in the same process we have on our order here? All right, then our first, um, issue here is, uh, South Fork Water Board, uh, conditional use permit, CU ten oh three, CP ten oh three. And at this time, gather my things, here I will read our...
I think we can, let's, let's hold off and see if anyone, I don't have anyone requesting to testify for the, uh, South Fork Water Board, uh, and we are recommending that we just continue that hearing to, um, uh, January twenty-fourth. Um, the applicant, uh, is working with us to provide additional information, so that we can review that application, uh, for that concept plan. Um, so at this time, we would recommend if anyone has come to testify for South Fork Water Board application, they give them that opportunity. Seeing none, uh, we are recommending that we do continue the public hearing with the record open to January twenty-fourth, two thousand and eleven.
Okay, with the staff report to follow at that time, correct? Okay. Uh, all right, do I have a motion?
Move to, was there more motion to continue?
Motion to continue.
So...
Second.
Have a motion, a second?
Mr. Lezwa, aye. Mr. Kidwell, aye. Commissioner Stein, aye. Mr. Groner, aye. Herr Paul.
Aye. All right, item number two. Excuse me, item number two, the application, uh, is for a site plan design review, uh, and variance for a new wedding chapel event center in the mixed-use downtown zone, um, SP ten oh nine, US ten oh two, VR ten oh two, and WR ten oh four. All right, now, at this, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay, at this time, I will read my, uh, legal information. A staff report has been prepared for the application, has been made available seven days prior to this evening's hearing. The staff report identifies the approval criteria that apply to the applicant's proposal. If anyone would like me to read those criteria, please let me know. Staff analyzed criteria which are contained in the staff report, along with any written comments and input that has been received through the public notification process for this application. The quasi-judicial hearing procedure, the commission will follow is set out in the state law in the Oregon City Municipal Code. The hearing procedure steps are shown on the charts to my right. Anyone wishing to speak should fill out a slip and give it to the planning staff before the hearing, or, uh, or before you speak. All letters reported pictured must be marked as an exhibit by the planning staff before they can be submitted into the record. For the public record, please begin all testimony by stating your name and city of residence. Testimony and evidence should be directed toward the applicable approval criteria. If you believe other criteria, apply in addition to those, address in the staff report, identify and discuss those criteria, and explain why you believe they apply to the application currently under consideration. A person does not have to testify in order to submit written materials or any length while the public record is open on each application. However, any party wishing for a continuance or to keep the record open must make that request before the public hearing is closed. If the Planning Commission makes a decision with which you disagree, any issue which you may wish to appeal must have been raised for the commission's consideration. Without raising the issue on the record with sufficient specificity and accompanied by statements or evidence, so that the city and all parties can respond, the issue will not be adjudged appealable to the State Land Use Board of Appeals. And in addition, Oregon advice statutes one ninety-seven dash seven ninety-six requires us to announce the following. The failure of an applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designated to respond to the issue precludes an action for damage in circuit court. Do any commissioners have any expat contact, conflict of interest, bias, or any other statement you declare?
I'm familiar with the site.
I do.
Me too.
As am I, as am I. Uh, I did go down and, and look out, looked at, walked around the site and checked out some issues that I had in mind there, um, spoke to no one, so I'm comfortable with that. I do know, uh, Dan Fowler, the applicant, did quite well, as we served together on the City Commission, so, but I don't believe that will affect my decision. Any questions of the commissioners on any of those statements? Okay, good. If none, then we will move forward, and we'll go to staff report. Christina?
Thank you, Herr Paul. This evening is, it'll be a little different. Uh, what I'd like to do is just do a preliminary presentation of the application at hand, uh, identify some of the outstanding issues, uh, then allow the applicant to speak, and allow the Planning Commission to ask questions to the applicant, and anybody in, uh, in the studio tonight who wants to provide a public comment, uh, staff then request that the Planning Commission continue this application, the January meeting, to allow time for staff and the applicant to work out some of the, the remaining details.
Okay.
The, uh, elevations and the site plan for the proposed project are on the side wall. We do not have a PowerPoint this evening, but I'd just like to give a, a brief overview of the proposed project. Uh, this is, uh, the construction of a new Abernathy Chapel, a multi-use event center located primarily to weddings, but will accommodate a variety of small, medium-sized functions. In addition to the chapel area on the main level, which will seat up to a hundred and eighty-eight people, there'll be a general-use banquet area on the lower level. The lower-level banquet area will also seat approximately one hundred people in a standard table seating. There'll also be a bride's dressing and groom's dressing room and a mezzanine for video recording. The site development will include the expansion of the existing parking lot to provide shared parking with the chapel and the existing engineering office on-site, which many of you may have seen when you did your site visit. The design of the Abernathy Chapel reflects elements of a traditional vernacular-style chapel of her weight, um, to the nineteen-century. It'll be a single-story building with a mezzanine and a full daylight basement. A steeple bell tower element will rise above the primary building on the west side of the building. The structure will be wood-framed and wood-sided with three string concrete walls and three sides of the basement. So if you are, uh, looking from the street up, you will see, actually, just, just point to the front elevation will be what you'll see. The elevation you'll see from the parking lot will be the smaller photo, and the elevation you would see as you were walking down the pedestrian path will be the larger photo, just to give you some context. On your dais will see a, a memorandum for Pete Walter, the planner on this application. This will be entered into Exhibit One into the record this evening. This is where it identifies some of the outstanding issues we're trying to work with the applicant on. One is the natural resource overlay district. Initially, it was thought that they did not need to require, um, request a variance from the, uh, Natural Resource Overlay though, for mitigating in a natural resource area for construction. That is not the case, and they will be coming back in the January meeting with their findings for their variance request. And we will also have our formal findings for the geologic hazards overlay districts, since a partial portion of this property is in the steep slopes. Let's see. The other interesting aspect of this application, which we'll see actually in both, um, applications this evening, is a new por, part of our code update, which is a section of seventeen sixty-two, which is modifications that better meet the purpose of the standard. And in both, uh, applications, the applicants are requesting a formal review by the Planning Commission that their design meets or exceeds the intent of the code specifically relates to transparency. Uh, it was always the intent, uh, with the code, uh, when this section was added, that there's always going to be a unique situation, a unique piece of architecture where, or a unique location, or a traditional institutional or, uh, commercial transparency standard for window fenestration of over sixty percent transparency would just not be appropriate. Uh, the applicant has provided a, um, traditional architectural style of a, of a chapel, and they do not meet sixty percent transparency, and so, rather than asking for a variance, which is kind of a hardship requirement, the applicant is asking the Planning Commission to look at their design overall and make a, potentially make a finding that their design, uh, meets or exceeds the purpose of the code. And so, what Pete Walter will do in January is kind of go through that process with you, um, and you will, again, go through the second application tonight with the Answorth House, but that's one of the new changes to our code, is there, is a way for an applicant to take an application that they think, um, provides quality architecture and provides, um, connection to the street, but maybe not in the traditional, uh, commercial architecture. And so, rather than variance, it's the Planning Commission making that independent finding through a public hearing, rather than staff. Let's see. I think that's the initial layout of the application, and I know, uh, this is the Iceland, the Iceland Architects, and Dan and Patty Fowler are available this evening to answer any of your questions. I know they might do just a brief presentation, but that's all I have on a staff level, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Okay. Any questions at this time, at the staff?
No.
Okay. Go ahead.
Just a question about the parking methodology here, so, whatever decision we render in terms of how the parking will work, does that go with the property owner, or is, let's say they split this up, and now they have somebody owns this part and this part, so how does that work? Does it go with the land, or does it go with the owner of the land?
The, uh, go, the, the use is being approved, and the condition's approval based on that use, and so, any land use approval, if situations change over time, then the app, the owner of the use, or the, of, might have to come in for a modification to the approval to continue, uh, operating what has been originally approved, I guess is the general answer.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's, that's what I, yeah, okay, I'll answer.
Okay, no other questions, is staff, uh, applicant would like to come up?
Thank you. Hi, I'm Jessica Iceland with Iceland Architects, and I, uh, live and work in Oregon City.
Dan Fowler, also of Oregon City.
And I'll just start, I think Christina did a, a pretty good job of explaining the basic, um, function of the, of the proposed project. Um, all that I might add is, I guess, to, to clarify that, again, that, that much of the location of this project is, was determined by its need and desire to work as a part of the existing Abernathy, you know, center of facilities, so that the wedding chapel could be utilized in conjunction with, uh, the Veil Gardens, that is just across the, the Little Creek, or in conjunction with Abigail Gardens, or, or some of the other projects, and so that was something that we took into consideration in the design of, of the facility and the parking, in that, you know, we, we have, a- as I think we've identified in the, in the application, we've got ample parking in this vicinity, and the idea is that the functions would occur at, at different times, so there would not be a function going on in the main Abernathy Center at the same time, um, as a function in the Abernathy Chapel, so the parking could be shared and utilized by all of the, the various venues. So, um, that's just one thing I wanted to clarify, and then the other thing is, in terms of the, the site, if you've walked through, you're familiar with it, and in terms of, uh, designing the site, we did have many, uh, criteria and issues to deal with on that site, with the, the floodplain and the steep slopes and everything, so we basically have cited that, this facility, in the most logical, if not the only, location on the site that would work in terms of, you know, raising it above the floodplain and keeping it at the level of the parking, so that's kind of what dictated where that sits, and how, uh, the elevation at which that sits on the site. Uh, but again, I think Christina basically explained the, the general design of the structure and the proposed function, um, so at this time, I think that's, I think I've, I've said enough, and maybe Dan has another thing she'd like to add?
Uh, just a couple of things. Uh, we gave, we tried to give great care, uh, in the design of the, um, chapel to fit the neighborhood, and to fit, um, obviously, the business purpose of the chapel, but also, we knew that we were in a transitional piece of property, property there that still related quite a lot to the Magloffland neighborhood, so, um, we really, uh, gave great care to that design, and, uh, we did, um, uh, present it to the Magloffland Neighborhood Association, I think that, um, had that letter from them, so, um, it was, and then I also have a letter that I'll enter into the record tonight from the, the doctor's clinic next door in support of the project, so, uh, we've tried to work with the neighbors and the district and, uh, come up with a design that fits.
That'll be Exhibit Number Two for this evening.
You, you sort of touched on my question, I, I, I was standing back the avenue, looking, uh, at this and envisioning this, and I thought, and I don't mean this in a negative way, but it was, it really sticks out, I like sort of some kind of thing, and, and I was beautiful design, and it looked like a great old chapel, uh, it just, it, it's like it's in a mixed environment, and it's, you really have these low one-story buildings, and, and then you go to this steeple. And I, I wondered, with, and with the loss of trees, some of the larger trees, it sounded to me like we're going to lose some of those larger trees. How, how, um, how do you think that impacts, how do you think that's going to be a visual impact? Have you considered that?
It's going to be beautiful. But frankly, I think, uh, it'll be quite iconic, um, what I see is I envision it, when I come across the two oh five bridge, and I look at that hillside, and, um, we're keeping all the trees in the back, and we're going to try to keep, you know, some of the trees in the front, but, um, that, it's going to remind me, I think, of a New England chapel or an old chapel that's nestled in trees. So, um, you know, we, we tried to keep the form of the building in scale with its size and height, and we, Jessica did a lot of research on the scale of those properties. Now, that property, uh, I think, tends to, you know, look taller, because it is a hillside there, um, but we're thankful for that, because it moved us out of the floodplain.
Exactly.
So, um, uh, I think, um, over time, as the trees fill in and grow, you know, it won't, it won't stand out as much, but it's, um, I think it's going to nestle in really quite well.
Yeah, and that, that's, I guess, that's where I thought, it, it's got a great background, and I think that's going to be the, the, really the saving grace of the, of the, of the building. I was more concerned about the loss of trees from the parking lot in that area, and what, what can we do to soften that effect, and I, I didn't, I didn't see that in here too much, and I just kind of wanted to get your thought on that, and we're losing, you know, typically in the new development, we, we tend to lose some of the older trees, and, uh, uh, I, I'm not a real fan of putting in, you know, little twigs and expecting to grow someday, I'd rather have twelve, take a twelve-inch tree out, I don't want to put in twelve-one-inch trees, but it's, it's the way we do it. Um, so I'm just curious, is what trees are we going to lose, and how do you think that will impact?
We've flagged them all, um, and, um, you know, most of the trees that are on that side are sucker trees. Most of them have suckered up from a big cottonwood that's there. Um, I think the replacement trees are going to be much more of an eighty tree. Um, there's a couple of maples in front that we're hoping that we can save, that, uh, will help shield that building. Um, it's just that, you know, the grade's really steep there, and when we put in, uh, the public sidewalk and things, there's, it's going to be a challenge on a couple of them, so, but I don't know if you want to enter?
I was just going to say that if you, if you do look at the, at the inventory of the trees, the trees that, the big trees that we are only, uh, losing are primarily, um, cottonwood, and so, in fact, are, you know, many consider a nuisance tree, and then there are a couple of, uh, at least the one large maple that we're losing that has a, a split in it, I believe, so there is, there are some issues with some of those trees.
Ooh.
So, I guess, that's part of it, I, I guess, that the loss of those trees, if, well, it's significant, and we, you know, would like to obviously save as many as we can, some of those were just problematic trees to deal with, and I think that by replacing those with a more appropriate tree, I think in the long run, it will, you know, we'll be better off. And then in terms of the scale, I just kind of wanted to mention too, that it is, because of the nature of it, and, and wanting to be a wedding chapel, we do have certain, um, design elements that are, you know, inherent to a chapel, the steeple does stand out, but again, I think, if you look at it, that's a small part of, a part of the actual building, and what we've tried to do is, by having it essentially be a daylight basement from the uphill side, which tends to be the more residential side, it is, you know, essentially, it's a, it's a one-story with a tall roof, and so, when you're looking at it from the, from the downhill side, where it has more significant impact, that is the more commercial side as well, so I, I mean, that was something that we thought about a little, in that we wanted to keep it smaller in scale uphill, relating more to the smaller buildings in the residential scale of that side. And then, again, looking at it from the front, you, you have that steeple, but then you also have it really sort of balanced by this really massive hillside behind where the building is going to be, so, I think it's, you know, i- in my mind, anyway, that's not, it's different than if it was on a flat side, where this would really stick out, um, in, in terms of the, the horizon line, you're going to see it up against a big, massive vegetated wall, so...
Yeah, and I, and I, and again, I think that's the saving grace, I think that's been, uh, really good. Another question, and I'll turn it over to my counterparts here, I, uh, you're moving a lot of dirt to, to fill that and get it flat. I was curious about your parking, and that's, that, I understand, it's going to be an impervious parking lot material?
Yes, it is.
Was there consideration for pervious, and, and that would help in the drainage of the area? Is there, we all like to do that as much as we possibly can?
Um, well, to be honest with you, we, we did have had some discussion about it, but it didn't, it, there, there was no strong, um, desire to do that, in large part because we're basically working with an existing parking lot, so in our expansion of that parking lot, we are adding on like less than fifty percent of the overall size of the existing lot. So, again, the, the, the natural thought was, let's use what we've got, let's expand it as necessary and practical, uh, but we didn't want to have to tear up the entire parking lot to do impervious, and, and, and didn't really think that it made a lot of sense, or there was logic to it, when part of it is impervious, part of it is pervious. Again, we're, we're looking at, you know, handling the stormwater as much as we can on-site, if, if you look at it, I mean, I think roughly sixty percent of the overall site is, is, or will continue to be, uh, vegetated or, you know, pervious, so overall, the impact of that parking area and the building is insig, fairly insignificant, just in terms of the overall percentage of the site.
Right. Well, but then you combine the two, and then you get a much larger parking, parking area, and it, it, it's fine, I understand completely what you're saying, um, and if we're, uh, standalone, I, I would say, let's, let's really look at that, but I understand that I can't, I don't certainly want to force him to do us something that doesn't make sense, so, okay. Any other questions of, yeah?
I have one. Um, just what's the relationship, uh, between the, um, floodplain line and the floor plates? We're in the floodplain, so, it was location, right?
Well, the site, part of the site is, is in the, is in the floodplain, but the entire building, both elevations are beyond.
Oh, they are? Oh, okay.
So we're not encroaching on the floodplain.
Okay, I didn't realize that.
It's just, uh, you know, the offsets, and, and that's the, the thing that we're trying to work through with the natural resources responses right now, that we've got some issues to finalize yet.
We are out of...
Totally out of it. Totally out of it.
The only building I have is up.
I'm thinking maybe you ought to just kind of attach a dock down there. Okay, any other questions? Yep, can you at this time? Okay.
I just might add that, you know, we're working, there was a few issues that came up. We're working with the staff. It's not that there's any controversy on the delay, we're happy to get it right. And we hope to have it done, but it's just not quite done tonight, but we're happy to get that right and to come back next month. And we wanted to field any questions you had, so in case there was anything else we needed to address, we could. But we look forward to completing it.
Great, well, I, we don't have any issue with timeframes or anything at this point, so, very good.
Well, you know, enough to get appointed, be the only question I have, but hopefully they can watch the tape and see the questions that the new commissioners might get.
Right, and we'll certainly recommend that to the new appointees, for sure. Thank you very much.
I don't have anyone as your question to speak on this application?
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this application for, against, or or other? Okay, well, seeing none then, we will.
Question for us, or we can just continue it to recommending the January?
Yeah, correct, January 10th.
That is for the fall court. This one, we're gonna do January 10th, 2011.
Okay, so if there's no further questions, then I should, I would, if I say we have a motion to continue this to a day serving of January 10th, 2011.
So.
You have a motion with a second.
Second.
And a second. Tony?
Mr. Tewor.
Hi.
Mr. Stone?
Hi.
Mr. Grover?
Hi.
Chair Paul?
Hi. Okay, thank you very much. And let's move on. To our next hearing. All right, this is a conditional use and site plan and design review pyramid for a nine hundred and fifty-one square foot addition to the existing reception building at the Ainsworth House. We had anybody come in, because I said, do I need to reread this? I don't think we had anybody come in, so you get to, you don't have to listen to me drone on about a goal issue. I think that would be true. So we'll just pass this on to your team? Ah, thank you. Do I have any commissioners that have any ex parte contact?
No.
Yes, that's what I'm gonna say.
I'm familiar with the site, I've walked by it a number of times.
I'm familiar with the site as well, too.
All right, so I'm on, maybe I have, it sounds like there's an issue there. So let's move on to Christina.
Christina, our wedding game of this evening. All right, this is CU 1004 and SB 1013. The conditional use and minor site plan for addition to the reception hall at the Ainsworth House. Here's a overview. You'll see the large lot in the middle of the Ainsworth Estates subdivision. And big arrow is kind of pointing to both, both buildings. The tall, the long, skinny one is the historic Ainsworth House. And kind of the larger square footprint that you see towards the street is the reception hall. Can you give a little background to see where we're, where we're in context to this application? In 1990, conditional use 90-10 was approved the Ainsworth House as a bed and breakfast and reception facility with a cap of a hundred guests per event. HR 9014 reviewed and approved the design of the reception building. Initially, they looked at holding receptions inside the historic Ainsworth House and religious reasons and for historic appropriateness, they realized a new standalone reception hall was the best option. Third, the reception area by historic house. In 2005, Kevin Yell, the new owner, requested approval for a nine hundred and thirty-one square foot addition on the site, which was HR 0505, which was approved by the historic review board. No conditional use review was required at that time because additions less than a thousand square feet, excuse me, not a hundred. A thousand square feet did not require conditional use review. In 2010, Mr. Yell came back to the city and was looking at to do a nine hundred and fifty square foot addition to the existing reception building. While this is also under a thousand square feet combined, they triggered conditional use for this application. On November 23rd, 2010, the historic review board approved HR 10-10, which looked at the historic appropriateness of this new addition to the reception hall. And this evening, you are looking at the conditional use application and minor site plan. The applicant is not requesting a change to the number of guests allowed at the event, which is currently capped at 100. The applicant is asking for approval for the addition to the reception hall. Here are some photos of the site. You'll see a lot looking, which is actually, turns into a corner, but we're at the top of the lot looking at the historic Ainsworth House. You'll see to your right is a large grove of trees with equal play into some analysis. That book is historic review board and staff has done regarding the impact of this addition. This is looking at the addition from the back corner of the property. So if I, by what, through the reception building you're looking at now, the historic Ainsworth House is on the other side. This is the existing parking lot that we will be speaking about this evening. This is also looking at the existing, it's a cross gabled building currently. And the area with the skylights was in 2005 addition. This is looking through the grove of trees at the existing reception building, just a little bit to your right of the initial photograph. This is showing the, where the blue arrow is, the addition to the reception hall. The first, I guess, first phase one was the long horizontal building. Phase two in '05 was the cross gabled kind of perpendicular addition. And this is phase three, which is another cross gabled addition horizontally. This also shows the new addition. Where the seating area is now is currently the patio area, and the applicant is looking at shifting the existing patio area to a new, a new abiding patio area, closer to the trees. Shows the roof plant, see how it's all tied in? See with the blue arrows, it's showing each of the elevations with the new addition. The top elevation shows, this is what you'd see if you're looking at the front of the street. As as I'll be looking through the trees, I'd be seeing these three sets of French doors that would let come out into the patio. The middle elevation is what you would see from the parking, well, actually, you'd be seeing from the street at Bunning Parking Lot. And the south elevation is what you would see if you were in the parking lot. The applicant additionally looked at ways to provide some additional on-street, or onsite parking. Currently, event staff utilize the small parking lot. And the applicant was looking at maybe there's some ways to provide some additional parking to them to get them out of the parking lot and also closer to loading and loading event materials. Both staff, public works director and engineering manager, looked at the three options. And at this time, we're only recommending the applicant move forward with option B. If he chooses, he's currently meeting his minimum parking. It is between the minimum maxin- maximum, and does not need to pursue any of these options. However, staff felt that option A did not meet the city's approved policy on additional curb cuts. And our community development director Nancy Kreshauer, or our public works director Nancy Kreshauer, was not going to be extending that right-of-way permit to allow additional curb extension. Option C, staff has not recommended approval for, it's, it's a little awkward to get in, and most likely, two additional spaces would have to be removed to get access to that. Option B looks at more of a tandem parking space of loading and unloading. Most likely, these cars will be the first in and the last out for an event.
Question, quick question there. So there, right now, we're showing a handicap stall, a couple of handicap stalls there. So how, how does that work when?
Actually, that is not currently a handicap stall. This is showing the outside, is showing actually the room, that turning into a drive aisle.
Oh, I see.
As far as the conditions of approval, they do now need to provide ADA access, which they had not before, and that will be part of the condition of approval.
And will those have to occur at these new, at the new area?
No, that would be, that's, that's the, per the building could upgrade of an addition. And that will be processed with the building permit process for the proper location and access. Okay, as we, I spoke at the previous application, the applicant is also requesting review under the section, modifications that will better meet design review requirements. I'll read this more specifically. The review body may consider modifications of site-related development standards. These modifications are done as part of a design review and are not required to go through the variance process pursuant to section 1762. I'll skip down a little farther. Modifications that are denied through the design review process may request a variance. And specifically, the review body may approve requested modification if it finds that the applicant has shown that the following approval criteria are met. A, the modification will result in development that better meets design guidelines. And B, the modification meets the intent of the standard. On balance, the proposal will be consistent with the purpose of the standard for which modification is being requested. And in this situation, and I will move back to the elevation. The applicant is requesting, staff is looking at the transparency requirements. If you were looking at the front elevation, it would be the middle elevation, the west elevation that exists today. And on a staff level, I thought this was a very appropriate request. This reception facility is designed to be compatible for two properties. One, the existing Ainsworth House, and two, the residential subdivision from 1990s that is completely surrounding it. It, Ainsworth Estates is located off Myers Road in the, because it's middle of our residential sector in Oregon City. It is a standalone building. Our commercial design standards were created to look at a commercial corridor, a cluster of commercial buildings, looking at pedestrian access for window shopping, for connection along as a pedestrian is walking along a resale street to interact between them and the commercial building. What this is, is a residentially designed building and provides a residentially designed window penetration. And so as such, I felt on staff that it was a very appropriate request to make. And so I I've made findings that, that this application, because it is designed to be compatible with the historic house and has gone through historic review approval, and to also to be compatible with the neighbors who have a reception facility in the middle of their neighborhood, to make sure that that, this architecture is appropriate for them as well. The criteria for conditional use, I'll kind of just briefly read the the five and the details of the findings found in the staff report, and I won't go into it in detail. The use is listed as the conditional use under the underlying district of bed and breakfast and reception facilities are. Two, the characteristic of the site is suitable for the proposed use considering size, shape, location, topography. It is a sort of improvements in natural features. The historic review board and myself and staff found that because of the location of the reception building, it's far back in the corner, it's behind the large grove of trees, and it's designed architecturally that while it is, you know, definitely a large building, especially towards the historic Ainsworth House, it has used its location and architecture to be compatible with the neighborhood. Let's see, four, the three, the site and proposed developments are timely considering the accuracy of transportation system, public facilities and services. This is not planned for the area affected by the use. Once again, the applicant is not requesting an increase over the hundred-person limit. So therefore, there will be no additional people per event that is currently allowed under the existing conditional use. What this does allow is Mr. Yell to provide winter weddings and winter events that can take advantage of a full one-hundred-person cap. In the summertime, many of the tables are brought out onto the patio to to let the bride, you can get to the hundred, hundred-person limit. But in the wintertime, that's usually not an option to shift one-thirty or five to the patio. So this is gonna allow the applicant to fully utilize the conditional use approval that was received in the 1990s. For the proposed use to not alter the character of the surrounding area in a manner which is substantially limits, impairs, or precludes the use of the surrounding properties. The primary uses listed in the underlying district. In your packet, you will also find public comments from neighbors and the homeowners association that are in full support of this application. You also see in your agenda that there was an additional letter that was submitted by the Chamber of Commerce and is left to entering the record as exhibit one this evening. And it should be on your, on your dice on that computer, not in hard copy. Amber Holvick of the Chamber of Commerce providing comment in support of the application. And five, that the proposal satisfies the goals and policies, this is comprehensive plan, which applies to proposed use, I've gone into a little more detail, but in general, as with the historic review board, allowing historic properties to find adaptive uses that can maintain of income level that will allow the applicant, you know, the property understanding communities, properties are very important. And the historic review board found that this addition did not adversely affect the historic Ainsworth House. And in addition, because of this location and architecture, will help the historic Ainsworth House remain in Oregon City as a vibrant community center and event center. Bed and breakfasts and inside their own specific conditional use criteria, the applicant has not requested any modifications to this. And so I'm providing it for the planning commission, but nothing is being requested to be modified or thieving. And so staff is not proposing deviation from the original 1990 application that approved this bed and breakfast. Staff has a few recommendations this evening, I just want to go over them. Specifically, number two, I apologize, I'd like to remove from the approval that was unfortunately brought in from a previous application. I thought I deleted it, and I had not. So condition of approval number two should be stripped from this application if planning commission chooses to approve this application. Secondly, with the parking lot, the applicant, if they choose to move forward with this additional parking, staff can recommend option B. The applicant needs to provide some additional interior landscaping, ADA spaces and bike parking. And two, the applicant has not provided any increase in site lighting, but would like to potentially add some shoebox lighting in the parking lot. It would be full cutoff, shoebox, dark sky proved. And the historic review board found that that type of lighting is meant to, as designed to visually go away, so you don't see it as an architectural element. It just will provide lighting, it'd be very simple and very supportive. If the applicant wants to find a little bit more design-oriented lighting, they will be going back in front of the historic review board to gain additional approval and potential modification of the site plan, but that may be at a later date. That is all I have for this evening. I'll go back to elevations, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. I, I have a comment. I understand what you're saying about the commercial use of the sixty percent. I, I think that makes sense. I, I kind of, I do want to say that, you know, when we talked about this, as we looked at the residential, that's one of the reasons we got rid of snout garages.
Right.
Because we don't want to see that big span. And in your second picture here, you've got a big expanse there. Unfortunately, or fortunately for the applicant, that's not something that they're working on. So we can't change that. But if I was looking at this as a new application, I would probably want to have some sort of breakup in that, in that stretch for us there. You know what I'm saying? So what I, I agree with what you're saying about the commercial side, but I also want to say that at least when we were talking about this from a residential perspective, we, we also want to cut those, you know, large homes that have one, one window and the entire back wall. That's kind of, you know, like get rid of as well in, in Oregon City. And that piece of it, I mean, you've got a long, the south elevation has four windows in it. You know, if it's like that, if that's not part of the application, but if it was, I would say, let's get more windows in there.
Right, and this is, I think because of how it's cited, it's so unique, and because Lot Lookin' has this interesting curve, you know, you play this game, what's the front, what's really, what, what's the front, what's the side, what's the primary elevation, what's not? You know, a main elevation, which we don't see in this, which has not been revised, is the is the, let's see, the east elevation, which is the relationship of the, where the front door of the event center is and that's relationship to the historic building. And so we also looked at, you know, look at the north elevation as the front elevation, because that's really the elevation that's also, is also the north elevation is what is the Annesworth needed in elevation. And that's what they both see through to the front part of Lot Winkham. What you really see at the west elevation, which is the middle, is as you turn in the corner. And, you know, as existing, to the, look at the middle, I don't have my. This part is the existing reception hall. And it was clearly the spot at the rear elevation. It was the least important elevation. You know, the applicant half provided additional windows on here. And so we felt that they were meeting the spirit. But again, this is all, you know, residentially designed architecture, scale and mathing. And we do have probably more windows on three of the elevations that you traditionally get from a single-family house under seven twenty.
And, and the north elevation is beautiful. That's exactly, in my mind, what I would like to see. That, that's perfect. And if I was looking, this is a completely new application, I'd say take that north elevation, look and put it on the south of the elevation as well. That, that's my only comment. I mean, nothing, yeah, it looks great. I mean, in my, in my mind, I don't think it's an issue. But, but you made that comment. I just wanted to kind of give you my thought as a planning commissioner. Okay, any comments? First, please, staff, before we move on to the applicant.
Well, I, I just have a comment that kind of ties in with what Tim was saying. The, on the west elevation, the portion on the right side, as I read it, that lower portion is a new storage shed.
Correct, correct. But behind it is also, it does not have any windows. You're adding a new storage shed.
And I, I guess my question is, is it feasible to look at a modification to the design of that storage shed to give it a little bit more residential feel to it as opposed to just a lean-to, with a little shed roof on it?
Potentially. I, I think, you know, knowing that this is a four-elevation building, and there has to be a, a side to the reception building, and it has the access behind the lean-to. And I don't know if you have, let me go back to. These, oh, you see this, the new storage shed up behind. And I'll look at the applicants a little more, but this is where the existing kitchen facilities are. And so, you know, I think maybe the windows and storage shed, yes, they, you know, windows can always be done. I don't, not necessarily what the function would be other than providing additional windows, which sometimes is important. I think I'd like to counter on staff's recommendation in the sense that between the, the west elevation and the street, you have existing landscaping, you have a hedge, and you have this potentially four cars that you'd be parking. This is really, while it is a corner elevation, this is kind of the business end of the building. So I don't know if putting two additional windows would really provide the purpose of what you'd be doing, which is that pedestrian interaction, because you wouldn't be having any interaction.
A follow-up comment, though, is that that particular elevation is the most visible from the housing across the street.
That's correct.
So that particular element would be lean-to shed is probably the least desirable of all the elements on the whole building.
Correct.
And facing the houses that are directly across the street.
I, I think that the way I saw it was, what would I look? What would be allowed as a corner house? Oh, yeah, a corner, a corner elevation of an existing single-family residential house. And this would meet our design standards of seventeen twenty. It would have the fifteen percent transparency on the side elevation for the whole length of that elevation. And this would not be uncommon to see this elevation on a side elevation in Oregon City for a corner lot house. So that, that was my line of thought, how I was looking. Not commercial architecture, but residential architecture.
Okay, thank you. We'll call the applicant at this time then.
Evening. Kevin Yell from Oregon City. Chief Cutter, overview. I think, actually, one of the things that I wanted to address was just what we were, what we were just discussing with the, in regards to the west elevation and the storage shed. One thing that does need to be brought up is, is a very utilitarian room. If we put windows in there, what you're going to see is boxes, stacked chairs, things of the like. So, well, yes, I, I do understand what you're saying is, is trying to get a more pleasing elevation along that street side. You're still going to see, it's a very utilitarian room. It also provides a, it, it provides a safety issue because there will be things stored in that room year-round. If we walk through the existing building right now, you'll find that it's largely empty. Even if somebody were to come up and look through the windows, you're going to see a concrete floor, you're going to see maybe draperies on the wall. Nothing much else. You look in the store, and you're going to see boxes and boxes of things, things that might be valuable, things that you might want to steal. To that end, I would say garages, by definition, don't have a lot of windows for that very same reason. You're looking at a very utilitarian space. Now, I'd be, we'd be happy to take a look at that and try to make it more architecturally pleasing. That's happened. I'm very happy to take a look at that. And, and something that Christine also brought up, if there was a quote rear elevation to this building, this would be it. While I understand it is extremely visible to the neighbors across the street as you pull into the parking lot, you are looking at the south elevation. That is extremely visible. As you pull in, as you're at the house, at the existing Annesworth House, you are looking at the east elevator, very visible. Even the front entrance to the, to the site itself is along with north. That, once you pull into the site, that is going to be very visible. There is, if, if there is a rear elevation, it would be the west.
Reality is it's set back quite a bit from the road. And there's already a fair bit of vegetation, trees and stuff there. So it's not just a flat here with a dead space in front of it either.
Well, and that, that actually was my next question. The, the plantings along that wall would be. We had another issue with, with another building in the local neighborhood where we had a long expanse with, with windows. And, and by, by proper landscaping, it, it resolved the issue. So that's one of the things that could really help there along that way.
I mean, we have a fence along that area, and there are four creepers on that which we're going to have to take down, but they're all being kept, will be put back. So the plant manager has one, one rows, and yeah. So that, that fence, the streets, you can see some. Well, there's two, that must be at least three years old, I think. It was two years old, just three years old. There's a couple of climbing roses on that side now. And those could be, will be replaced.
Well, that would be my suggestion, is look at the landscaping.
I'm happy to answer that.
Full landscaping, I think that would solve my issue of, of that presentation.
Add to anything else that Christine went through. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Do we have any questions for the applicant? This time? Anyone?
No.
You got off easy.
I can joke for hours about why I want to do it, but I didn't think of it.
Well, no, it's, it's a wonderful venue. And we are in Oregon City are lucky to have it. We're lucky to have you and they're supporting it, supporting our economy and the things that are important to us. It's, it's a jewel, that building. And, and while this building is not so much a jewel, it, it fits very well in my mind in the neighborhood. I, I'm always concerned when you're doing add-ons in a historic neighborhood being. Of course, I live in the McLaughlin neighborhood. So I'm always concerned about that. And this seems to, to fit into that pretty well. That was my, really my big concern, is that one elevation.
Happy to make the place as effective as we can. It's, our neighbors who live directly across from there, actually, I was hoping it could be a site, but one of them's been, obviously has stroke. So they're not here. But we dialogue on a, not quite, certainly a weekly basis around things. And we do, we value all of our neighbors. So I'm making it as attractive to them as we can.
Well, you got, and it's certainly good for your business to make it attractive too. I understand that, agree with that. Okay, very good, thank you. All right, we'll go to the public for any comments. So Tony, do we have any?
Do you have anything that's been submitted?
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? For, against, or either, or for this application? All right, seeing none, then we will close the public hearing at this time. And bring up for the commissions for discussion, gentlemen?
Well, I, I understand what, what the discussion is regarding that shed roof. But I think that applicant and staff have done a nice job balancing the residential needs of this development with the business needs of, of, of the reception area. So I'm, I'm in favor of approving the application.
Me too. I think given the hedge and, and some of the, you know, landscaping around here, I, I think this little issue here with the shed is, you know, not as drastic, I guess, as, as I first saw. So that was really my only issue with it, was just the location of a storage shed on the, on the front, front side. But I'm okay with it. I'm okay with this.
All right, very good.
I think it was good, and it sounds like we have plenty of support within the neighborhood as well.
I, I think the proposal is, is really good and fits with the neighborhood. And the only comment I would have, I, I agree with the applicant that windows on a, a storage garage or shed is not appropriate. But perhaps something to soften that facade, such as a trellis or an arbor, something like that, might be considered.
Very good. Well, I said my piece, I think it's a good application. And I think it's a wonderful addition to the building. And I, if it makes the, the business better, I'm all for it and I support it for it. I don't, I don't predict that there are going to be any additional traffic issues or concerns. So I wish you the best. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the application as of the minute with the change to the condition of number two, as Christine indicated.
Strike, strike.
Yeah, strike, strike that condition number two.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Tony?
Commissioner Sein, aye. Commissioner Legua, aye. Commissioner Groner, aye. Commissioner Kidwell, aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Good luck. All right, well, that is the end of our public hearings, I think, here. And Tony, do you have some information or anything you'd like to share?
I think the first thing, we'll just kind of go through. You've probably seen that the old Danielson site is an demolition of a building, and we'll be moving forward with the site prep pretty quick here and getting a new building going out there. The jug handle project, you'll probably be excited to see some trees being removed. I recall that we did go through the land use review of that water resource and seep slope application a couple of months ago. So we're getting ready to start the, some of the site prep. The actual project, the main part of it will start in the spring of two thousand and eleven, and hopefully include, let's see, fall, end of twenty twelve with that project. We also have the Oregon City Westland Bridge closure. That's going to remind you that it'll begin on January fifteenth, two thousand and eleven, and will most likely last about two years.
Tony, has, has there been any resolution about the timing of the change of the street to one-way traffic or two-way traffic?
Not yet, we're still working on that. And to try and hold size some of the major work with some of the bridge work that's going to occur. But it looks like we are going to start moving forward with that and, and, and try and implement it so that, once the bridge does reopen, it's a fully functioning two-way street. Really, the outstanding issue was, while we understood how Main Street should function, there was still some question about when you're coming off or onto the Oregon City Westland Bridge, what happens to that light at Main Street? And what that design would look like. So that's still the outstanding issue that we're still, that we're still working on. But we, we will be moving forward with that. Nancy Kraschaw from Public Works Director did secure a two-hundred-and-sixty-six-thousand-dollar grant for pedestrian and bicycle improvements at Tenth and Main. We'll be getting that project going pretty well. And that'll include ADA sidewalks, lighting, landscaping, raised intersection. So she's done a great job of securing some money for, for the city. Twenty-two, twenty-three million for the jug handle project, ninety-nine, obviously. And then Tenth and Main is another great project. As you recall, we also did the Promenade this year and, and the Warner Milney Stormwater Intersection Realignment. So had quite a, quite a few public, public infrastructure projects that have, have come to fruition lately for Oregon City. On this Wednesday at four-thirty, the Oregon City Urban Renewal Commission will be meeting. And there'll be a presentation from Center Cal Properties concerning the status of the Rivers Project on the old Rossman landfill. You may have seen some information in the newspaper. But we are working with them on a disposition and development agreement. And Center Cal Properties, Fred Bruning, would like to come in and just give a presentation to the Urban Renewal Agency, realizing we're probably going to have some change in January. So this is more of a preliminary, here's where we're at, here's what we're thinking. Probably be doing something similar again in January. But just to give you heads up that if you can watch it online or would like to come along and sit in, you're more than welcome, of course. But that will be happening this Wednesday and just the, the earlier start time at four-thirty, because there is probably going to be quite a bit of information and there are other things on that agenda that night before the city commission meeting at seven o'clock. So with that, any, any questions? Anything on the city? So. It is with amazing eight years. So Commissioner Powell, Commissioner Legua. It's been amazing working with the two of you. I appreciate all you've done for, for me, as well as our staff. Good times, easy applications, contentious applications. You guys have dealt them all with the amazing, the ability to listen to everyone who's come in here. And it's been pretty contentious times and maintain your professionalism and courtesy. And even if you didn't agree with staff or a citizen, you treated them with respect and you at least heard them out. And you never, ever belittled anyone, which during some of those meetings, it's pretty impressive. And we always do appreciate, I, I appreciate all the support I've always gotten from, from both of you and all the work that we've done, which includes the water quality resource area to a natural resource overlay district to tree protection. Eight, eight years ago, yeah, we finally upgraded our comprehensive plan that hadn't, hadn't happened since nineteen eighty-two, a complete rewrite. UGB expansions, urban and rural reserves, multiple annexations, two concept plans, major rewrites to single-family house design, master planning, geologic hazards, multifamily housing design standards, cottage housing, exceptionally dwelling units, brand-new zone, brand-new zones in Oregon City, floor area ratios brought those to Oregon City, improvements through site plan design review for commercial development, pedestrian access, transit access, parking lot design, tree protection, tree planting, tree mitigation. parking lot design, tree protection, tree planting, tree mitigation. Your fingerprints are all over the code that we have today and it's much improved because of that. Once again, I can't say enough how much of a joy it's been to work with, with both of you for eight years. And thank you, Corey, for your service, for all the time that you've put in. And you guys are always ready. You always provided positive feedback and you'll be missed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's my part of the human honor. It really has to serve for the city as a volunteer on the planning commission. I think if anybody looks back on all our decisions, we'll see that we actually stood by the planning department a great deal of the time. And it's because we have a great planning department who knows how to plan a city. And so it's been pretty easy actually to fall in line as a citizen and watch our city at work. So I'm going to, I'm going to miss it.
Thanks.
Well, I, I echo Dan's comments. I, it, this, I was fortunate to be able to be a city commissioner in Oregon City for eight years. And, and it was a challenge. And I, and I've heard you all say before, I swore I'd never be a planning commissioner because of the amount of work that was involved and the amount of reading and, and the contentious things that went on all the time. And I love it. I'd do it again in a heartbeat. It's, it's been one of the best things I've ever done in Oregon City since I've been here in my fifteen years. But really, the benefit of it is meeting people, you know, meeting the, the staff and having, we truly are the best staff that I have been associated with. And I've talked to a lot of people over a lot of different areas. You're, you do extremely well with what you have. And matter of fact, I mean, and I've been to many of you as staff over the, the eighteen years. And everybody has done an excellent job. This current staff, I think, is exceptional in the amount of work you do with the, with the little that you have to, to work with, people-wise. Again, you're always ready. You're always prepared and that makes our job easier. We, you know, for us to sit, listen to the community and see what we believe and what they believe and make it work, that's the easy part. All of the, I can't even tell you how difficult it must be for all of you guys to do. It's, it's an amazing amount of work that you do as a group. I too will miss it very much. It's a, I'm not sure what I'm going to do on Monday nights now, so I have football. But I, I really have enjoyed this very much. It's been an honor for me to be involved all the way through this process, but even more as a chair. I couldn't have asked for a better group of, of gentlemen to be with me. And, and that goes back to everybody that's been this served with me. It's been, it's really been an honor and I hope we can continue this relationship through many other things in the city. And I would say to those of you that are leaving, don't give up. Don't give up. I mean, we'll, we'll continue to fight. There's, there's a lot of opportunity for us to continue to stay involved and I, and I would highly hope that you would. I intend to be involved in a lot of different ways and I hope that everyone else does as well. So thank you and thank you guys for everything you've done for us as a commissioner. And I look forward to keeping tabs on things. So thank you so much.
Pleasure.
Is that it?
That's all I've got.
Okay, well, thank you guys. It's been a pleasure. Last five years, how long we've been here, Ben. Not as long as your record in Mondays, I guess. It's not that long, but. Been my pleasure. Thank you. So we'll talk when we interview the other, those of you that can make that. And I highly suggest you do because you'll be serving with them and I think it's an important aspect. And we'll talk then. And if you have any questions, you can email everybody. We can all talk down about it.
I will, I'll, I'll start making the phone calls tomorrow to get them set up for the third. And then once I have a little bit more confirmation feeling of what dates, I'll send her an email probably before the end of this week. And we'll just go from there as to who can attend, who can't and whatnot.
So we don't have any more hearings between now and the third?
No, we do not. Yeah. We are, we are going to cancel the one on the twenty-seventh.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
If you'd like, I'll give you one more.
What, here we, we're all here.